On the top line header, it reflects March 20th is the date of the meeting. In fact, that meeting was held on April 17th, so I would move to amend that.
Second.
And I would move to approve it as amended. So is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Can we have a, a... Do you take the role on that, Linda?
Yep. Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Mr. Dolman?
Yes.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes.
Mr. Daly?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Antonikowski?
Yes.
Chairperson Hoak?
Yes. Michigan, can we go ahead and call the first matter on the agenda for this evening?
Appeal by Alex Martin, Castleman Solar LLC, agent for a variance from Section 220-18A2 and Section 220-18B2 of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna as it applies to the property at 1256 Lock 7 Road, Niskuna, New York, located in the RR Rural Residential Zoning District to install a 573 square foot ground-mounted solar array in the front yard and exceeding the number of accessory structures on the property. Front Yard, Section 220-18A2 states that accessory structures are not permitted in the front yard of any lot. The zoning ordinance defies the front yard as a yard situated between the main building and the front line of the lot and extending the full width of the lot. As proposed, the solar array will be located between the house and Lock 7 Road in what constitutes a front yard. Therefore, a variance from this section is required. Section 220-18B2 states that there shall not be more than three accessory structures on a lot. Currently, the property has five pre-existing accessory structures, a fence, swimming pool, two sheds, and a garage. As proposed, the solar array would be the sixth accessory structure. Therefore, a variance for one additional accessory structure is required. Eleven notices were mailed, zero responses.
Good evening, Sarah. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Alex Martin from Castleman Solar. And for address, 245 Broadway, Building 2, Menance.
Okay, before I get to your application, Ms. Robertson, just for my edification, could you point out, let me know where the array could be located on the property and be in compliance with the code?
Um, yes. So this one was confusing to me as well. And so Linda and I had to study this pretty thoroughly to really understand. But the large structure that's showing in the bottom of this drawing is the barn. The house is actually here. This is the house like way down at the bottom. You can't even see the whole house. Oh, I wonder if I could like draw. Let me see. Then, I don't know. My computer's not working very well tonight, so I'm using a computer I don't normally use. Uh, the house, yeah.
Sir, sir, sir.
Gotta get on the mic.
First, why don't you come up, why don't you go up to the mic and tell us your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Ben Morton. My address is 1256 Lock 7.
Okay.
So I'm the homeowner.
Okay, and if you wouldn't mind, can you just grab the microphone if you're gonna walk?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, just show them where the house is. So essentially, the front corner of the house.
Haven't used one of these for a while. I'll do my best. So the house is just here. The, the kind of accessory, kind of barn structure's here. And the solar, where we propose to put it, is up here.
Sure. So Laura, where, so the, the array cannot be in front of the home, correct? Right. Okay. All right, I got, so it'd have to be behind that line. And that was confusing me because the barn looks like that's the, the, the home. That's what I was trying to figure out. Okay. All right, that answers my question. Thank you, sir.
And do you want me to respond to that?
Well, why don't you go, go up to the, the podium? And now that I have that question, I don't know if you want Mr. Martin to speak or you'd like to speak. But the, the question is, why, basically, the first question is, why do we have to have the array in the location that it is?
There's a few factors going on here. One is that the fields down below that yellow line are flood, are flood plains.
All of the, all of those fields are flood plains?
They're flood plains. So from, from, there's kind of a natural ledge and from that, kind of basically where our house finishes, it drops down kind of 15 feet. And then it, it's pretty low there. So I don't think it would be feasible to install solar panels there for obvious reasons.
Okay.
I, if we could possibly go back to the one before... So the, but where that yellow line is, technically, I could chop the trees down there. I thought, you know, from a responsibility perspective to the environment, that would be less preferential. If you, if the view here is chop the trees down, I can probably make that happen.
Well, sir, let me just give this, the, it looks like there's a tennis court or something. Is there some kind of court there?
Yes.
Okay, so why couldn't it go to the tennis court farther away from your neighbor's house and closer to that yellow line?
So I'm just gonna point it out.
Yeah, in that area. Just, just, I'm just wondering.
Uh, the, the issue with that is that all of those trees, which are just to the kind of that corner of it, they'd also need to be chopped down if we're gonna put that there.
Okay.
Again, like, we've tried to minimize the effect. Part of the reason why we've put solar in is to try and lower our carbon footprint. But sure, if, if you, if you'd prefer us to move it close to there, we could.
Obstructions to the south that... Oh, no problem. Obstructions to the south will cast a north shadow that, well, not just north, it'll arc. So, so the trees that are south of the court were posing a solar access issue. And it's the, the same sort of access restriction as the trees that are on the west side of the court as well.
Okay, and it, on the other side of the yellow line, there's no possibility of putting the array anywhere on the other side of the yellow line and elevating the electrical components to it?
There's, there's a...
Because I mean, in my understanding, it's a, it's a 100-year flood plain there, right? So I mean, it's not...
Yes.
It's not something that frequently floods.
Below the retaining wall is the flood plain. And then the hill that goes up to the yellow line from that, you can just barely see the corner of the retaining wall there. The hill is in excess slope for installation of the ground screws for the ground mount. They're really, at the site presently, only has, I would say, in my opinion, the southwest of the court immediate. But that's a, that is a, a throughway for the equipment on site.
Okay, let me, let me, as the homeowner, have you had a conversation with your neighbor that's gonna be most directly affected by the placement of the solar array?
Yes, yes, of course. And one of my neighbors, Jim, is, is here tonight.
Is that the neighbor who's gonna be affected?
So that there are two neighbors, one who would see, see the solar array from across the road. And the other is Sue and Steve, who have a garage that backs up against that solar array.
Okay, so what you're indicating to me is that it, it wouldn't be visible from their home?
No.
Okay. All right, before we get to the second variance, does anybody have questions on the location of the, the location of the solar array on the property?
Chairman, I don't have a question about the location, just the size. What's the kind of footprint for record of the solar array?
The, the square footage of the footprint is 656 square feet. It's a five-by-six orientation, is five panels high, six panels wide. And it'll be 30 panels altogether for a nameplate value of 12.15 kilowatts.
And what's the nature of the mounting system? How is it?
It's helical screws, so there's not gonna be any concrete piers that we'll be using. They're just screws applied to the proper torque that'll hold the system.
Okay, but it's not a single surface, it's individual panels with their own screw. Is that...
No, there are, I believe, six screws. Let me just make sure that for the footprint. It'll be four helical screws that are going to hold up the apparatus that will hold the panels, so...
So in the diagram that's up there right now, it shows six?
It does show six. That's more of a, a standard, it's that... Believe that's more of a, a placeholder image to show more about the, like, the general structure of the array. The stakeout plan, which is the fourth page of this document, would be showing where the stakes would be inserted.
And the height at the back, at the higher end of the array, what's the height of that?
Um, that's just a little bit over 10 feet. It's 10.9 feet.
Thank you.
I have a question for you. Your structural, what is the wind velocity that they will take that they won't blow apart?
I will be able to find that information. I'm not thoroughly used to looking for that, but I believe that I will be able to find that. 102 mile an hour basic wind speed.
102 mile?
Correct.
After that, it's a little trouble?
I would probably expect that, that after that would be... Beyond that, it would not be guaranteed for its structural integrity. But up to that standard wind speed, it is assured by the engineer that had approved these plans.
And the structural that we saw prior to this picture is adequate to hold 102 miles an hour?
Correct.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Richard Green. If you'd be gracious enough to just help me out. If I'm your neighbor across the street, is that neighbor elevated to your property?
Yes.
All right, so in English, they, if they're looking out the front of their home, they're looking downslope to your property, correct?
Uh, that's correct.
All right. And as best you're able, can you approximate the distance from your neighbor's residence to the place where you're proposing to build the array?
I, I would guess at about 100 feet, perhaps, 75?
No, that's okay. That's okay. Ready? That's okay. We can get you in a little bit. All right.
It's pretty well set back.
All right. If you're the other neighbor, the one that was referenced a moment ago who's not here, if they were located on their residence, would they be able to see the proposed array?
Uh, not easily. I think they have, it's hard to see from this image itself.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's hard to see from this image itself, but they have a large garage which abuts their property. So they, obviously, if they went around the garage, they could see it. And the garage is between where the solar array is and their house. And it's, I'm guessing like a three or four-car garage. It's pretty big.
All right, so between the two neighbors, the one who would be most effective is the gentleman who's sitting in the audience?
In my opinion, yes.
All right. Uh, will the solar array be more visible during the wintertime?
I would assume so because of foliage.
All right. And I remember something in the package, and just in English, it dealt with toning down the reflection of the array. Is, is, what is the array made of? And is it constructed with something that will help minimize reflection from the sun? Like, like when the sun hits, hits a car and just, you know, lights right up?
The glint. Yes. So I don't have anything that is the common naming practice for it is just to name it as anti-reflective coating.
Does that mean anti-glare in English?
Yes.
All right.
Yes, it's, it's to, to increase the absorption of light, which overall is better for the, the solar panel anyway. And you would really only see glint, glare, and reflection from a, a lower budget panel. Because, yes, that, that, that's a component that goes into the effectiveness of the solar panel as well.
So is the anti-glare component of this proposed array the best that one could reasonably have?
Yes, it's, it's an upper-market panel.
All right, if you'll just humor me for another couple of questions. All right, I'm driving on Rosendale Road and I take a left onto Lock 7 Road. And I'm going down to the lock to, to fish. Uh, as I'm driving by your property, would the proposed array be visible to a person traveling on the road from Rosendale Road down toward Lock 7?
I, I think so. It is supposed to be a 20-mile-an-hour road. I'm not sure that everyone abides that speed limit, but yes.
All right, fair enough. And I've done fishing now and I'm coming back up from Route 7, from the lock. And I'm driving toward Rosendale Road. Will the opportunity to see the array be more or less the same as when I was driving down?
I think it's probably gonna be less because the Sue and Steve's property has a bunch of fairly substantial evergreen trees that provide them privacy.
All right, say I'm following the speed limit, which of course I would always do.
I'm very pleased to hear some sounds.
Is it, is the proposed array something that is going to jump out at a driver? Like, wow, there's an array.
I don't believe so for two reasons. One, the, the panel side of the array is facing away from the road. And the, the opening, like, there is a, an entrance way that you would have a view shed for. It's about 25, 20 to 25 feet wide. That is, if you were to go at, directly to the road from the array, that's really the major view shed. And then the rest of the road does have some foliage. So you're not gonna have a long angle of view of the array on approach or going, especially if you were to be, like Ben said, going the other direction, you'd have less visibility that you would be able to... You would see the array for less time going the other direction. If that helped answer your question. Sorry.
You don't have to apologize. You did, both of you gentlemen, did help address some of my concerns. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So getting, following up on that with respect to the view shed issues, I note in your application, you indicate that you plan to install further vegetative screening. What did you have in mind?
My, my mother and father-in-law are expert gardeners, so I was going to delegate that to them. I don't have, I don't have as much knowledge as they have, but I, I would look at a mixture of evergreen and native species.
But that is something that you're actively planning on doing if this was approved?
Yeah.
Okay, this, any other questions with respect to that?
Just one, Mr. Chair. That's a pretty big shed you got there. Why is the shed not an appropriate place? Why is the, a rooftop installation not appropriate in this instance?
One day, it will be appropriate, but right now, it's not. And the reason for that is that the shed is, I think, one of the oldest structures in Niskuna.
Fair enough.
It's 250 years old. Its roof was replaced maybe 10 years ago, but I think more remediation is needed before it can carry a structure of that weight. And the main house itself, again, one, I think it's about 220 years old. The roof, which would be best suited for this, needs to be replaced at some point. And so it's also a slate roof, which makes installation tricky.
Are you, are you planning on having that roof replaced?
At, at some point, but not, not in the near future, if that makes sense.
And you're not contemplating now additional solar panels being installed on the property?
No.
With respect to the, the second variance request for the additional accessory structures, what are the existing two sheds used for?
So one's a, a... One's a pole shed, which was used for storing tractors in the past. And the other one is the shed that I was, the, the barn that I was referring to. And right now, it's being used for a little bit of storage, but it's not being used for farming purposes or anything like that.
Well, with respect to the pole shed, what is, is that in disrepair or is that in good condition?
Uh, can I approach the picture?
Sure. Why don't you, why don't you grab the...
So the pole shed itself is just here. So it's right behind all of these trees.
Okay, but is it in good, good condition or what's the condition of it?
Fine.
I mean, I guess, I guess the question is, we're looking to minimize the need for the variance. So the question is, why can you not remove one of the structures on the property to mitigate the need for the variance in the first place? Or mitigate, you would still need the variance, but why, why do we need all the structures on the property? I understand why you need the pole pool. I understand that the, the barn is there, it's at a large historic structure that you wanna keep. So then I'm, I'm asking you about the, the shed that... I assume the garage is where you store your, your vehicles, correct?
Yeah, so this, this, this whole barn here is like part of it we store our vehicles in.
Okay, so there's a secondary garage as well?
It's part of the same structure.
Okay, so I see, it, it says that there's existing five, existing accessory structures, a fence, a swimming pool, two sheds, and a garage. So are you saying that the garage and the shed, and one of the sheds are combined on that, in that one structure? Is that correct?
I, I didn't write that, so I can't comment.
I'm, I'm asking you, how many, how many sheds do you have on the structure, on the property?
So we have this one here, and we have a, a pole barn there for storing farming equipment.
Okay, and there's no separate garage on the property?
No.
Laura, why do we have three, those three structures noted in the application?
Okay.
I believe that there is a structure associated with the pool. So the shed is the pole barn, and then the pool shed, then the pool. What's, call it the garage is the barn.
Okay.
Thank you.
So again, the question is, why do you need all the structures on the property?
So starting from the left, I don't really wanna demolish a 250-year-old barn.
Okay.
You know, obviously, when we go swimming, it's nice to have somewhere to get changed and provide privacy. And it's, it's a larger property. We're not planning to put it to farming use, but we are trying to conserve it, which means that we need a tractor with a brush hog to clear the land so that it doesn't become overgrown.
Okay, so you're currently on the, the pole barn, you currently store a tractor, some, some sort of in there?
No, we don't currently. We keep, there's a, there's a large mower that's currently there. It's on my list of things to do at some point to purchase a tractor.
This one, I guess my question is, all the structures are currently being used?
That's great.
Does anybody have any further questions?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, just a, a few more questions. And it may be one question for our planner. Are there any previous variances granted for any of the accessory structures that are on the property?
I don't believe so. I believe they are pre-existing non-conforming due to their age.
Okay, even the pool?
Yeah, I mean, it's a little interesting to me that the pool and the fence are sited separately, but I believe they're actually old enough to have been grandfathered in. I'll double-check.
The, the pool shed is actually an old cob, cob barn for storing corn on the cobs.
Oh, okay, so it's been, it's been converted from that use to pools, storage and privacy?
That's correct. It's handy.
So based on this larger discussion, would be accurate to say that your overall aesthetic plan for the property includes very much conservation-minded?
That's correct.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like you're repurposing old farming structures for other, more modern uses?
That, I mean, we haven't done, but that's, that's, that's the way we're, where we're going.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the board? Having heard no other questions, is there any member of the public who wishes to be heard for or against this application? Sir, can you come up and state your name and address for the record, please?
Sure, Jim Kokonak, 1263 Lock 7 Road. I live right across the street and as Ben indicated, we probably have the most direct line of sight view of where the proposed sighting is for the, for the array. The distance from my house, you can see the, the house on the top-left corner of the screen is probably about the same distance back from Lock 7 Road as, as my house is. You just can't really see my house, but you can see where the, where the driveway comes in. And then the house is set back. So it's probably, given that I think the array is roughly 55 feet, I think the drawing said, from the street, it's probably 150 to 200 feet from my house to the array with a row of trees on my side of the street, as well as some vegetation on the other side. So I think we don't have any, we definitely don't have any concerns with the location or the visibility. As far as the glare, as the installer indicated, it would be angled away from us to the south. So I wouldn't expect to see any sort of glare from that. So we have no objection to this project. And also with the accessory structures, if you've been on the street, it's such a classic property, one of the oldest properties in the town. And the barns and sheds are really, they create the feel of Lock 7 Road, which many of these houses are from the early 1800s. So I would hate to see anything taken down so that you could put up an array and avoid an accessory, accessory structure variance.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions? Thanks. Is there anything further the applicant wishes to offer?
Nothing further. Thank you.
Is there anyone who wishes to make a motion for or against this application?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion. Okay. Uh, I would approve, I would vote to approve, move to approve the variance as requested. Uh, I find that the benefit cannot be achieved by other means. We've explored that pretty thoroughly together. There's a flood plain, there's forests that we don't wanna chop down, and rooftops don't seem to be structurally appropriate. I'll also say that while it is 100-year flood plain throughout the... I'll also say that, uh, while it is 100-year flood plain, um, throughout the United States, those 100-year flood plains have been flooding more than once every 100 years. And so I do understand that mitigating factor. Also, I'd say, um, that there could be a minor undesirable change in the neighborhood. There, there's always people that will complain about a more modern-looking structure, uh, in a situation like this. But, uh, I do feel that the planting of, uh, screening, uh, evergreen foliage, uh, which the, uh, applicant has stated they're, they're going to do, as well as the overall historic preservation-minded plan for the property. Finally, the neighbor that is most likely being affected showing to support, uh, this application, caused me to, as a whole, decide that this is not an undesirable change in the neighborhood. This is absolutely a substantial request. Uh, multiple hundred-foot square, square foot structure and an additional one on top of non-conforming property to begin with. Uh, but again, I do find historic preservation to be a mitigating factor here. Far from having an adverse environmental impact, I think the purpose here is to have a positive environmental impact. And self-created is arguable, uh, so, but that's non-determinative. And on the whole, uh, I would vote to approve, uh, the variance as requested.
Uh, just for clarification, both variances, correct?
Both variant, yes, the app, approve the application as a whole, including both variances.
Thank you. A motion's been made, is there a second to that motion?
Can I ask a further clarify, clarifying question because there was some statements made with respect to, um, the planting of trees? Is that a condition of the motion or are you just making that assertion?
I, uh, the applicant stated they are going to do it. I am not requesting that that be a condition.
Thank you for clarifying.
Is there a, uh, a motion's been made, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion on the, uh, motion? Having heard none, uh, Mr. Chikity, will you take the roll, please?
Mr. Latif?
I'm gonna vote yes, and I would like to add to the applicant that if he's planning to do those trees, that would be, uh, a plus for, for the town.
Very much so.
Thank you.
Mr. Dolman?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Daly?
Yes, for all the reasons stated.
Mr. Green?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Antonikowski?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Chairperson Hope?
Yes, for the reasons stated, your, uh, application's been approved, uh, seven to zero.
Thank you very much indeed.
Have a good one. Mr. Chikity, we call the next matter, please.
Thank you, boys.
Appeal by John Wallerman for a variance from section 220-25B1A of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna as it applies to the property at 1174 Highland Park Road, Niskuna, New York, located in the R2 medium-density residential zoning district to maintain a six-foot fence which exceeds the height limit in the side yard. Fence section 220-25B1A permits a maximum height for fences located in the front and side yards to be four feet. As constructed, a six-foot fence, high fence is located in the side yard. Therefore, a two-foot fence height variance is required. Zero, uh, 17 notices were mailed, zero responses.
Could the applicant please come forward? The applicant online.
Hello?
Yeah.
Yes.
Hi.
Hi, could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, I am Victoria Wallerman and the address is 1174 Highland Park Road.
Uh, Ms. Wallerman, can you see, uh, what's being depicted on the screen in front of you?
No, I'm not online. I was told that it would create feedback if I was online with my phone.
Okay.
But I can try to get on if I should.
Well, let me ask you this, the, the fence has already been installed, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and who installed the fence?
Um, Bobby Dynasord?
Who was that?
I think it's on the, uh, Bobby Dynasord, I think it's on the application that was filled out.
Okay, and I, I'm looking at, uh, a site plan or a drawing that was provided to the town. It looks November 29th, 2022. Do you have that in front of you?
Is it in the packet that was online?
Yeah, I believe it's in the packet that's online. Page 42 of the packet.
Okay, I'm looking at it, it is, um, there's a yellow line on it, highlighted where the new fence was, that map of lot.
Well, that's not what I'm looking at, I'm looking at the last page of the packet, Laura, which?
The last page, okay. Okay, yes, okay, it says basic house and the addition, that one?
Correct.
Okay.
And that was submitted to the building department, it looks like on November 29th, 2022, correct? That's what it stamped?
I'm going to assume that, um, actually my husband took care of this, he wasn't available tonight, so I was gonna answer questions, but?
Well, that's what's stamped on that page, right?
Okay, yes, it is.
Okay, so, uh, the, the fence that you're seeking the variance from is what is? There's an existing fence there going, uh, perpendicular to the house, correct?
Right.
And then there's gonna be another fence that's moving, uh, parallel to the house, right? And the parallel portion is what you're seeking the variance for tonight?
Yes, you mean the border, along the border to the neighbor, that line, yes.
And on this, this diagram, uh, am I correct in assuming that, there's nowhere's on this diagram does it indicate that there would be a six-foot fence installed there? Am I?
You mean prior, you mean prior to our fence installed?
At the time this was submitted to the zoning, uh, the planning board, you, you weren't contemplating a six-foot fence at that location, correct?
No, there was one. We weren't, we weren't, we had already installed it, we didn't realize we needed to have a variance at the time.
All right, when did you install the, uh, fence?
I don't know the date of that.
What year was it?
I don't even know that.
2022.
Is that right?
And, uh, Ms. Robertson, how did this matter come before our board or come to the town's attention?
There is a complaint in November of 2022 from a neighbor that the fence was installed without a building permit.
Oh, okay, I didn't know that. There was an original complaint about the old fence claiming that it was partially on the neighbor's property. Um, but we made sure that when this one was put in, it was corrected, it seemed like it was angled slightly toward, it encroached on the neighbor's property. That was the only complaint that we knew of.
So, Ms. Wallerman, at the time that you installed this fence, okay? You were replacing an existing fence, right? The one that's running perpendicular to the property and you installed, and at that time, there was no fence running parallel with the house, correct?
Oh, no, there was a fence going in both, it was a corner fence. It, it picked up from our neighbor's vinyl fence and then it was a wooden, a really old wooden fence that came out, you know, along the same border and then came back to the house.
So?
And attached to the house, yes.
So what you're saying is the, the fence that is presently there, we, we, we recognize that that's a new fence, but it is the same location, size and dimensions of the fence that was previously located there, is that what you're saying?
No, no, exactly, that's not true. Along the front it is, aside from the very corner, it was a four-foot fence there.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, Ms. Wallerman. When you're saying it was, I, I, I've, I've referred to two sections of the fence, the one running perpendicular to the house and the one section running parallel to the house.
Right.
So when you're saying it was originally there, which side are you discussing? The one that's running perpendicular or the one that's running parallel?
Well, both those, uh, sections were there, but the one that's running perpendicular was actually further back.
Okay.
It actually was back eight feet to just where the addition starts. But we had some complications, we originally were going to put it there, but with this overgrown, uh, burning bush, we had to make accommodations and we had some obstacles to go back. And so we decided to go around the bush. But in doing so, we actually added that one section of a six-foot height to come to the front and go across. That one section encroaches on the front yard, I guess, it's not any longer in the side yard. It's no longer in the backyard, it's now, um, two.
I believe. Laura, can you explain to me why the, the section is running perpendicular, doesn't need a variance?
The section that's running perpendicular is three feet all the way until that very last panel. So that very last panel, because it's like a transition panel, is a little gray area. But the building inspector just cited the six feet, the full six feet.
The one that's running parallel?
The one that's running parallel, yeah.
So, so, Ms. Wallerman, the reason that the one that's perpendicular is not, does not require a variance is because that that section of the fence is only three feet high?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, so the issue is with the six-foot fence, that I understand, well, why did you install the six-foot fence in the location that you installed it, the, the section that's running parallel?
Okay, uh, well, the neighbor's fence is six-foot. And so we carried on off of that, which we could have done for eight feet up until the, the burning bush. But the problem was that that thing had gotten so huge, we couldn't come back toward the house there. So the next section we put in was past the grandfathered-in backyard designation, I guess, that's what we learned later. And so we went forward, we wanted to keep it consistently the same height before making the corner. We just thought it would have more aesthetic appeal and look, you know, smoother in the transition and not drop down all of a sudden to the four-foot that's coming across the front. We thought it would just, you know, have a nicer look. And one of the other things too is this, this burning bush has probably been growing there for 50 years. It got so big that sometimes it's hard to tell if it's in our property and whatever. And we, we thought that the higher fence kind of really helped us to see where the border was and we could keep it contained and trim it and maintain it well without it going over into the neighbor's side.
So to summarize, my understanding of why the fence was constructed the way it is, you have a transition piece going up to the six-foot height and your main considerations in putting the six-foot height there were for aesthetics as well as, um, to help contain your burning bush from?
Yes.
Right, and also provide, uh, presumably a blind from your neighbor's trash cans?
Well, it just, if you see the other pictures, our living room window is right across from there. And so if it's lower, the fence, you can kind of see over it and you can see, you know, it's not horrible or anything, it's just that you can see that there's other things there. Um, there is one other thing that wasn't a main concern, but we do have a dog that when she sees people, she thinks they're intruding, so she'll bark. And with the higher fence, they can walk around over there, our neighbors, and not really be seen by our dogs, because she kind of ignores them. But when it, when it's four-foot, she can see them, like if they move out to the end of the driveway, she will sometimes bark at them and we, we don't want her to be a nuisance. So it did help to kind of create a buffer to eliminate that issue.
Thank you, I'm gonna open up, uh, for additional questions from the board.
Okay.
Are there additional questions from the board?
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, I have a few questions. This is Katrina Pacheco.
Okay.
Good evening. Uh, I just want you to describe, you said from your living room window which looks out the side of your house towards that?
Yes.
Fence, correct?
Correct.
Uh, and just to clarify, if the fence were not there, you would be seeing into the neighbor's driveway in front of their six-foot fence, correct?
Yes, we would see their garbage can area and that kind of thing.
Uh, so that six-foot portion of fence, is that right on the property line, roughly?
Yes, mm-hmm, yeah, both of them are right along the property line, their fence and our fence.
Okay, so, but their fence stopped, um, kind of where it pointed towards your house?
Yes, it's, it's further back, we have two sections going beyond where there's end. Originally it was only the one section and then we added the, the additional one so we could contain that bush just because it was really no other way to do it.
Okay, and, uh, just briefly about your neighbor's view and the position of their house relative to yours, uh, is their back corner, uh, back further, is that where their six-foot fence starts?
Yes, they have a gate there and they have the fence running, you know, down the border.
Right, but that comes from the corner of their house?
Yes, yep.
Okay, and they have windows or doors along that wall?
Uh, no, it's a garage.
So they're able to pull into the, or, or it's the side of the garage that you would be looking at if the fence weren't there?
Yes, exactly.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Are there other questions?
Mr. Chairman, good evening, how are you? My name is Richard Green.
Hi, nice, nice to speak with you.
Likewise, thank you for being available by phone. As you face the front of your house, um, on the right-hand side where we are discussing the, um, application here for the variance for the, for the fence, did you have a chance to speak with your neighbor on, uh, uh, most?
Not recently, well, he, uh, had a lot of issue with the old fence. It was in really disrepair, it had been there 50 years, I swear, you wouldn't even recognize the type of wood they used for it. And we just used this, he kept it there because it was there and our dog was contained. But it was in really bad shape and things were falling off and he, the man, one of the people living there would mention it often to us. And so we just, when we replaced the fence, we just thought he'd be happier to see a new fence there. So we didn't, you know, we didn't confide in him or ask him if he was okay with it, we just assumed he was gonna be happy with it, but, um,
So let me see.
He hasn't mentioned anything about not liking it since it's been put in.
All right, very good, I apologize, I didn't mean to inadvertently, uh, speak over you. So in other words, there were conversations with your neighbor about the, uh, deteriorated nature of the fence.
Yes.
And then you and your husband went forward and hired fence people and put in the fence that is the fence we see in the picture, which is the subject of the application, correct?
Correct.
All right. Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Having heard, uh, none, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard for or against this application? Sir, if you could just come up and tell us your name and your address for the record, please?
Good evening, my name is Richard Pryor, I live at 1166 Highland Park Road. I am the neighbor in question.
Okay, sir. And what's your position on the application?
Well, it's, uh, news to me that I complained about that fence, the fence that it was existing. I did, excuse me, I did have a conversation with the Wallermans about it when they first moved in six years ago. Um, Mr. Hickman, I, I've actually been at this residence for 56 years, my wife 75. So I'm a little familiar with the neighborhood, what has been there, what hasn't been there over a 50-year period. All right, um, as I said, um, the fence, uh, I'll agree with Mrs. Wallerman that, uh, needed some repair. Uh, their dog did escape, uh, shortly after they moved in and we noticed there were a couple of pieces that were missing, I took some lumber and, and repaired it. After that, um, there was really no discussion about the fence. I did mention to Mr. Wallerman that after a survey that I had done in 2011 by, uh, William Wiley, a professional surveyor, it was determined that that fence did come on my property. As I had spoken to Mr. Hickman before he moved, when time came, I would, you know, I would remove it and I would continue it down my property line. Mr. Hickman was going to completely remove the burning bush. The burning bush was no problem to me. It's kind of a pretty bush, but it was large, I have to agree with the Wallermans. I guess it did destroy somewhat of their fence running perpendicular to their home. Okay, um, but anyway, that was the end of the discussion with the fence. Mr. Wallerman, just before they removed it, took some extra material that, uh, they built an outbuilding in the middle of their backyard and took some extra material and kind of tried to fix it somewhat. And it did look horrible then, but I had no complaints about it. I didn't complain to them and, uh, they didn't complain to me.
Sir, so let me just ask you, so the, the fence is? Sir, so let me just ask you, so the, the fence as it is now, would you, would you consider it an aesthetic improvement from what was there previously?
No, no.
And can you explain why not?
Well, because they ran that fence, uh, just beyond our six-foot fence and a little bit higher so they could put their post cap over that section of fence, about a, a one-foot drop from our fence. Our fence actually ends at the back of our property line, all right, at the corner of the house. Uh, per guidelines with, you know, the rules of the fence. Uh, you know, it doesn't really look good because it's, um, it's back on my property, Mrs. Wallman thinks it isn't. As you saw, that print, um, dated from 1939, from the person who owned the home in 1939. It's, uh, supposed to look somewhat like a, a survey, it's not stamped or anything, but that's 1939.
Well, sir, let, let me just stop you, are, are you concerned with respect to where the fence is placed? And whether it's on your property or who, where the fence is actually located?
Well, sir, the, the, the property line is a different issue, that's something that this, uh, the building inspector explained to me, they don't deal with property lines, that's a civil issue, that's something that has to take place in a different, at a different time and a different place, uh, that'll be addressed then. Um, but it is still on my property, I'm gonna have Mr. Wiley come back and we will take another look at exactly where their fence is. Um, they believe their, their property line is 20 feet from their home. Um, they also stated in this paperwork that their, their, um, fence that runs perpendicular right now has a setback of 20 feet from the front of the house, which is not true, it's like more like 16. So, uh, yeah, to have a six-foot fence along my property when it's supposed to only be four-foot, yeah, we object to that. It, they don't see it because since then, uh, they, uh, put up some trees like arborvitaries. And, uh, yeah, they won't be looking at it. That burning bush should have probably been trimmed and then they could have easily worked around it. That is a bogus, bogus, bogus excuse. I kept that trimmed off of my property line, I don't know why they couldn't have trimmed it back.
Let me ask you this, if you're looking at from your house
Mm-hmm.
towards the fencing question.
Mm-hmm.
What part of your house are you standing in?
I'm standing at the corner of my garage.
So you would have to be outside at the, on the outside of your garage looking towards their fence, correct?
Well, yeah, or I could see it from my dining room window.
Okay, well, that's my question, where can you see the actual fence from your house?
I can see the, the, the end of the fence, the corner of the fence, where it run, where it starts, it's run perpendicular to their home.
Okay. And running from the back corner of your property, you have a six-foot fence, correct?
Yes, I do.
And that's in compliance with the code?
Yes, it is, it's inside my property line. As shown, actually, I gave, uh, uh, Mr. Canizo, I gave, and, uh, and, oh, on January 30th, 2023, I've been to see him six different times in this past 20 months. They actually had the fence put up while we were out of town on September 1st and then applied for a building permit on November 29th. Uh, they claimed that, uh, they did not know about the six-foot rule. Um, Mr. Wallman is a self-proclaimed, um, contractor, general contractor. Uh, and I'm really surprised that the gentleman who put up the fence, he's been in the neighborhood, neighborhood before. He's, so he's not unfamiliar with rules, I would think, he runs business. Uh, so they definitely knew that they were putting up a six-foot fence when they put up a six-foot fence, the, uh.
Sir, let me just stop you, so
Sure.
So if the fence was reduced to four feet, you would have no objection to it, correct?
As long as it's within guidelines, no.
Right, so is it fair to say that your main objection is you just want them to comply with the code?
Exactly, like everyone else.
Right, so other than their failure, because part of the code is your right to apply for a variance from the code.
I know.
That's why we're here tonight.
Sure.
And we're balancing all the factors to determine whether that variance is appropriate or not. So outside of compliance with the code, what are your specific objections? How does the fence as it is now affect you?
Well, it's, we don't care too much for it, it's not aesthetically pleasing to us.
Okay, and that's because of the two feet, the additional two feet?
Sure.
Okay, all right.
No one else in the neighborhood has a, has a six-foot fence extending from the back of their property that I know of in our, in our neighborhood. Why should they be different?
It's a fairness issue for you, correct?
Sure.
Okay. Is there any other, is there any questions for this, uh, from the neighbor?
Are you talking about me?
No, no, Ms. Wallman, no.
Okay.
Okay, sir, thank you, thanks for your input, I appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Ms. Wallman, do you have anything additional to say for or against, uh, or do you have anything else to say in support of your application?
Well, oh, in support? Um, well, I just feel as though the fence does help to show a clear borderline for the, uh, maintenance of the, the bush, and so that way it wouldn't be any concern that we weren't keeping it within our property line, so I thought that was valid. Um, and aesthetically, I think it's a really great-looking fence, but, but, um, you know, um, if it's a fairness issue, I know that that's not true though, I, I've seen other fences that are put in different uh, circumstances that I think probably got a variance, which is okay, um, you know, not saying it shouldn't, but I didn't agree with that. The only thing that he did mention that, I don't know why he's so sure of it, but one of the, um, maps that you have of our lot, you know, the map of the lot, it shows that it's, uh, 20 feet from the side of the house to the property line, that's written on there. And this, this in ours, this was from the original owner, I guess. You know, which I'm saying you have it there in your packet.
All right, thank you, uh, I think Mr. Latif here on the board has a question for you.
Yeah, I got a question for you about the fence. Uh, your husband is a contractor?
Uh, retired builder.
And the person who installed it, did he say anything about having it as four feet and then it was installed as six feet?
No, actually, he was the one who reassured us that, um, he felt it was commonplace for the fence to be able to go to that distance and be fine.
Okay.
We kind of used his advice, actually.
Great, so now.
We weren't sure, sure about it, because we originally had planned on putting it in the same location it was. But we had those obstacles that we couldn't do that, so that's how it ended up coming out. And then we started recognizing the other, um, bonuses and benefits to having it go around the fence, so we were happy we did it. But we didn't realize that we were going against the code at the time.
Okay, and, and what's it take right now for you if this was to be, uh, approved or not approved? But assuming not approved, what would it take you to make this fence into four feet? And it seems like the neighbor is okay with it as long as it's a four feet.
Well, it would be, you know, it would be an extra cost to us because we would have to have the contractor come back and put in the proper size that you're requesting.
What is the distance, uh, of, uh, going four feet to six feet, do you know? Like, what are we talking about, how many feet?
It's eight feet, the, the only variance we needed for one section of eight feet that was six-foot high. So actually, the one that's, the first section is in compliance, but the second section that we extended it beyond is not.
Okay, so eight feet, if you change that to four feet, uh, fence, then you are compliant, correct?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Ms., Ms. Wallman?
Yes.
So I, I, I understand the burning bush, okay, so I understand where the burning bush is.
Mm-hmm.
And I understand that you have some mechanical, you have an air conditioning compressor that's, uh, on the other side of the fence, correct?
Yes.
How many, how many feet behind the, uh, air conditioner compressor is the back corner of your, uh, home?
Um, probably about six feet.
Six feet, so why, why would you not be able to run this directly from the back of your back line of your, um, home and then you could have, you know, your full six feet?
Are you talking about the back of the addition? Because that, or just the back of the original home, where the fence was originally?
Yeah, I think the back of the house would be considered at this point the back of the addition.
Okay.
So the only way that they can connect, or they can have the six-foot fence where it currently exists, is connecting into the neighbors. And it would actually be replacing two panels, two, the transition panel and then the two panels that are shown in the, um, drawings.
Laura, is that the eight feet we're talking about?
I don't. I, I'm not sure, um, but we understood talking with, uh, Tom when we went into, about this, um, complaint, not complaint, but this, uh, need to verify the permit and all that. He had said that because where the original fence was, that was considered backyard. So that one section that we put in the eight-foot could be six-foot high because that was considered backyard. It was just the one that we added on to come out further that was in question, he said.
So if, if that fence is gonna be the six-feet fence even with your neighbor to the back of their house, are we still talking about, what's the distance that you would need to change it to four feet to be compliant?
My understanding from Tom Canizo is that just the last eight feet that comes out forward was not in compliance. Just that one section.
Okay, thank you.
I, I don't think that's correct, I don't know what the miscommunication was, but the rear corner of the house is very far back, I think that both panels would have to be replaced to four feet, but they could still connect into the existing six-foot fence because that six-foot fence is zoning compliant. It's attached to the neighbor's home and it's coming off the rear corner of their house, so that's not a problem. It may just have been confusing because where the existing fence was, that was, but it's been gone for over a year, so there's definitely no grandfathering in our pre-existing non-conforming at this point.
Okay.
What's been gone for over a year?
The old fence.
We replaced it, like simultaneously, we took out one fence and put in the new.
Yeah, I can do a little more code research, but I would definitely say just from reviewing this, as far as I know, there is no grandfathering in of additions. Unless Elena knows any better than I do, like I see the rear corner of that house at the 1972 addition and I don't know why there would be any relief from the code for that.
Laura, just, uh, talking about the grandfather, if they were to apply back then, at the time they replaced it, they would have been grandfathered. But right now, it's too late, right?
Correct, it was, uh, taken down and put up without a building permit and it hasn't been addressed for two years, so it's definitely timed out.
And that, and that, what was taken down was a six-foot fence at that same location, yes or no?
No, that, that, that was a four-foot.
So the, the, the existing fence was four-foot, so it doesn't really matter because that was compliant at the time anyway?
Right, it could have been a six-foot at the time, if, if they wanted to, he just only put a picket fence, well, not he, whatever, the first owner only put a picket fence going at, you know, a corner. The whole fence was all one four-foot picket fence. But that was 1939 or whatever.
All right, I think, I think I have.
That house ended there.
I have an understanding, is there anybody else on the board that has any questions that we haven't addressed?
Uh, I just have one question for the applicant, um, Ms. Wallman, uh, do you want to change your application in any way to try to mitigate the variance that's being requested?
Well, there was one other option we thought might work because aesthetically, I, I feel what we did was a nice way to do it. Um, I think dropping down four feet isn't very attractive and would have the, the burning bush really sticking out over the top of it. I don't think it would look really, really that nice. So, and you know how in the front it has a transitional piece, goes from six-foot down to four-foot? In the front?
Yes.
Going to, to the picket fence? We did that for the same reason, because it looks nice, other than these, you know, jumpy heights. What if we were to move, I don't know how much it would cost, but what if that were in the place of the second panel, the eight, the six-foot second panel and tapered down and then across the front was all four-foot? Would that be more acceptable?
What you're proposing, I believe, is you would taper the last panel from six feet and then the next panel would be six-foot tapered down to four feet and then across the front it would be all four feet, is that what you're suggesting?
Yes, I am.
Is that something you would wanna, uh, you, you're not required to amend your application, um, that's something that you can do at this juncture, though. I can't tell you that that's necessarily gonna be approved by the board either. But generally, the board does look for the applicant to try to mitigate their need for a variance. So it's up to you as to what you want to do.
Well, do I have to make that decision before knowing the outcome of this variance hearing or?
Well, no, I don't, I don't, I believe we could, we could, we could rule, or there could be a decision on your application tonight, and then if you changed your application moving forward, um, you could make a new application in the future. But it couldn't be the same, it couldn't be the same application, it would have to be a different application, is that correct?
And there'd be new fees and everything associated with it.
And there would be, yeah, and there would be new fees associated with that.
Okay, well, that might be a, a second phase, you know, right now we probably should just find out what the outcome of this one is.
Okay, all right, um, so, uh, thank you, Ms. Wallman. So we're at the point now where we're gonna, I'm gonna accept any motions, either in favor or against your, uh, application? Uh, is there anybody on the board that would like to make such a motion?
I'll go ahead, Mr. Chair. I'm going to vote, uh, to not approve the application as written. Um, we, if we didn't have six-foot fence, uh, cases in front of us, we would just all be out of jobs. Um, and we've long held that, uh, there needs to be something compelling or special about the property in order for us to approve it. And, uh, I'm gonna say that I, I don't see a real benefit here, uh, besides the dealing with the bush, which seems to be, um, easily dealt with in other ways, so I do find that the benefit can be achieved by other means. I do believe this will be an undesirable change in the neighborhood, as we have held that all six fences are, six-foot fences are to some extent. Um, and additionally, the neigh, a, a neighbor's complaint weighs into that. Uh, we do hold that this is absolutely a substantial, um, variance, uh, additionally. I, I don't see there's any reason to think would have adverse environmental impact, it is obviously self-created. So on the balance, I would vote, uh, or I move to, uh, disapprove completely the application as written.
Um, a motion's been made, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
A motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion on that motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just a question, uh, the, the applicant was willing to, needed some time to view what changes she would do, there's any chance, so she doesn't have to pay fees if it's not approved or approved, we don't, you know, uh, that she can table it for.
I, I don't believe at this time, correct me if I'm wrong, that she can table it, a motion's been made and seconded. She had, the applicant had an opportunity to either seek to table it or, or, well, I don't know if the applicant could table it, but, um, she could have amended, she could have requested to amend the application, which she clearly indicated she was not interested in amending the application and wanted a determination from this board. So Elena, what, what, I'll let you weigh in on that.
No, that's correct, at this point, there's a motion and a second, so we have to follow through on that motion
Right.
at this point.
Just that figure they asked, just in case.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Latif, um, Ms. Chiketti, will you go ahead and call the roll, please?
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Mr. Dolman?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes.
Mr. Daly?
Yeah.
Mr. Green?
I know that, uh, reasonable people can disagree what is, uh, desirable and undesirable, but in addition to, uh, many of the factors referenced and testified to, um, I'm concerned that indeed this type of fence might be an undesirable change in the immediate neighborhood. So for the reasons stated, in that reason, uh, I'm going to have to vote yes on the motion to deny the application as presented. to deny the application as presented to us this evening.
Mr. Antonikowski?
A yes for the reasons stated.
Chairperson Hoke?
Yes, for the reasons stated, I also indicate that the fact that this was a completely self-created situation, that this fence was put up without a, a building permit in the first instance, was a factor that I, typically, we say, self-created hardships are not determinative to an application, but when a fence is installed in the absence of a building permit, that does amplify or aggravate that, that particular factor, and it does so in my calculations in this case as well. So I am also a yes on the, the motion, and that means, unfortunately, Ms. Wallman, that your application has been denied by a seven to zero vote. Okay?
Okay.
If you have any further questions, you could talk to the, you could talk to Ms. Robertson or the Building Department, they could help you out, okay?
Okay, all right, thank you very much for hearing the case.
Have a good one.
You too.
Ms. Shiketti, will you call a final matter, please?
Appeal by Aaron Butler for a variance from Section 220-25B1A of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna, as it applies to the property at 2477 Troy Schenectady Road, Niskuna, New York, located in the R1 low-density residential zoning district, to construct a six foot fence which exceeds the height limit in the side yard. Fence Section 220-25B1A permits the maximum height for fences located in the front and side yards to be four feet. As proposed, a six foot high fence is located in the side yard, therefore, two foot fence height variance is required. Four notices were mailed, zero responses, and we received a county referral that said to defer to local consideration, no significant county-wide or inter-community impact.
Thank you, sir. Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Aaron Butler, 2477 Troy Schenectady Road.
Before you start, Ms. Robertson, the application indicates that the current fence was approved and installed in 1996. Can you, do you have any, can you shed any light on that?
Yeah, so the building inspector did research that, and I'm trying to bring this up. He did, did confirm that there was a six foot fence, but it is different in our records than what was installed, and that's in large part in this area right here. He couldn't find any conforming billing permit or anything that allowed the issuance here, and then, so based on the slight changes and the fact that even though there was a fence permitted in 1996, I don't believe it had a variance on the safe side.
So when you, so there were no variances granted, so that indicates that the entire fence was four feet at that time?
Um, it's hard to say.
Oh, I'll let, I'll let you talk in a second. So there's no record of what the size of the fence was at that?
I don't believe we had a record of it. He found a, I talked to him about this a lot. He found a permit for a fence in 1996.
Who's he?
Uh, Tom Canizo, yeah. He found a permit for a fence, but it wasn't in the exact location, and he couldn't confirm.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Butler, why don't you tell us about your application and why you need the variance?
Sure. I bought the house in 1986. 1986, it was a four foot fence from the property line, from Route 7, to the front, the front corner of the house. It was four foot. And then there was a perpendicular section of the fence with a gate from the, the parallel section to the house. From the front corner of the house to, I believe, three sections back was a six foot fence. I have photographs of it from back when I bought the house.
Do you have those photographs with you?
I do.
Would you like to publish them to the board so we can take a look at them? And we'd make them a part of the record if you don't need them back?
So in 86, when I bought the house, that's, that was, that fence was there. In 96, this fence had fallen into disrepair. In 96, I got a permit to change out the fence. Tom came over, Tom, you know, it might not have been Tom. The building inspector came over and looked at it, and he told me, he says, you can't have a six foot fence here because it doesn't comply, and he showed me the standard. I said, well, I've got a six foot fence now. He came over and he looked at it, he says, well, you do, you have a six foot fence now, you're okay. And I got the permit to put the fence that I'm looking to change out right now.
Okay, so let me just tell you, what's depicted in these photographs, that is the, I, I understand you've had a subsequent fence to this.
I've got pictures of both. The initial, the first fence that was there in 86, and then the fence that I installed in 96.
Okay, thank you. You go, go ahead.
So anyway, well, now it's, it's, it's been a lot of years later, and this, the fence I installed in 1996 is in, is in rough shape. I contracted to change it out. So I got a permit, and I was surprised, very, very surprised to find out that I, I had to come here tonight to talk about a variance, being as though I'm not doing anything more than what's been there since 1986.
Yeah, and the specific concern that the building inspector noted was that it wasn't in the same location as what was permitted, and that was specific to that location that I highlighted, this area here, doesn't show.
I can explain that.
Yeah, it doesn't show up in any of our permitting.
I think you're, I, I, that's, that's intended to be a three-dimensional look right there. I'm not adding the fence jutting out. There's a transition period, that's showing right here, the, the proposed fence will transition from four feet to six foot. That's not additional. That, you know, he, he, Tom said to me on the telephone, or on the phone, that it seemed confusing to him. Yeah, that's not that trapezoid point right there, okay? But it's showing that we're gonna transition from the four foot fence, the fence will stay four foot from a property line all the way to the front corner of the house. Then it will transition from four feet to six feet, then it'll finish out to the back of the, of the proposal.
Laura, do you have a Google view of this, this property?
So I can tell you that, that, that building inspector did not understand that. He thought it was additional fence panels, and because there was no variance for the previous fence, his recommendation, and I agreed with him, was to come for the variance. But we.
So, so that being said, before you pull up the Google, the Google images, does that change the Building Department's perspective on where, whether a variance is required?
Well, it definitely makes it murkier, but both he and I like to, when we can, catch properties up. If a variance is required, it certainly weighs in on the case that the fence has been there for 40 or 50 years, but it's still never received a variance.
Yeah, I definitely would have looked at that and thought that there was a, like, kind of a jut out like that.
Yeah, no, I, I see that now. I, I didn't see it when I was talking to Tom on the telephone, I didn't understand because I knew what I was looking at, so.
Can you, can you, can you see if you can get the picture?
Yeah, I'm bringing it up right now.
Mr. Butler, why don't you, well, once, once Ms. Robertson pulls it up, the image, why don't you get the microphone and explain to us exactly where the?
Okay, well, I just have a quick question while she's doing that. The trapezoid that we saw on that map is kind of like an elevation of the change in height of that panel.
It was meant, it was meant to, it was meant to demonstrate that there was gonna be a transition.
Thank you.
Okay, why don't you show us exactly where the existing fence is? I understand it might be obscured by.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of, there's a, yeah, there's a lot of tree here. It's gonna run right here.
In a straight line?
Yes, in an absolute, from the, from the property line up here, all the way to, this is a maple tree, it'll go up to the base of that maple tree.
And where, and where exactly, and that's the exact same location that the current fence is in?
It's where that fence is, it's where the fence was in 1986 when I bought the house.
And there's no difference in the elevation or the height of the fence from the existing fence to what is contemplated to be installed?
No, not at all. In, in fact, if you take a look at the, the 1996 pictures of this fence that I'm taking down, when it was brand new, you see how the transition is actually in the front yard? This time around, we're moving the transition to the backyard.
So the first panel that would be behind the fence going across from the house would be the transition panel?
No, the transition panel is going to be parallel with the house.
Right.
Okay, so it'll, it'll go from, it'll go four foot to the front corner of the house, then it will transition to six foot, and then back to the base of that maple tree.
Okay, so you, you would only need the variance, taking out the, the issue of whether it's a pre-existing use or taking that out of the equation? The, you would only need the variance from the, the front of the house to the back of the house, correct?
Yeah, it's not a very big variance.
That's correct.
So, so the existing fence was getting old.
Oh, God, yeah.
Since, that's 1996, that's the last time it was.
Yes.
And it was six feet between the front of the house and the back of the house? Because I want to just make sure that we're all understanding exactly.
Yep, if you can just shrink, you shrink the page down again, please.
So the 1996 fence was from the front of the house to the back of the house was sixty?
By Niskuna's definition, yes, okay.
You lived there, so.
Yeah.
I, I want to believe.
The, the four foot section, okay, that's been there since 1986 when I bought the house? The four foot section was here to the front corner?
Of the house.
Of the house.
Okay.
Okay, then it goes six foot beyond that.
Okay.
Okay.
So it goes all the way to the back of the house?
The 96 fence, the 1996 fence had a transition piece that went from here to here.
Okay.
This, the, the proposed fence is gonna have the transition piece behind the front corner of the house.
Behind the front? And what was, what was 1996, what was be, behind the front?
It was six foot from here to the tree.
Okay.
So I think, Mr. Butler, what you're saying is you're further mitigating the need for variance by, by putting that transition piece back further?
I feel you, yes.
Are there other questions from the board? Is there anyone in the public who, the audience wishes to be heard for or against this application? Sir, why don't you come forward? Mr. Butler, why don't you just take a seat for a minute? So if you could state your name and address for the record, please?
Sure. Good evening, Scott Crowder, 2481 Troy Road, 2479 Troy Road, 2467 Troy Road, 2461 Troy Road, formerly of 2485 Troy Road. Been in Niskuna since 75, went to school with Mr. Green. Just like I say, I'm, what Aaron is proposing, I think, will be a very nice change from the, the piece that he had there, and I can see it from three sides, as I own the, the property to the right of the home, behind the home, and two properties to the left of the home. I think this would look very nice, and I think he's going all out by going further back on his transfer piece, and I think would look, would look very nice. What color is it gonna be, Aaron?
I'm, I'm very proud of this design. The posts themselves are gonna be black, which that's the disposal by brick porch. Cross members will be black, and the pillars will be brown.
Okay. So I, I'm in favor of that, and, you know, we all try to be good neighbors, and I think he's doing a good improvement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crowder.
If I may, Scott?
Mr. Crowder.
Mr. Crowder, it's been, it's been half a lifetime. It's a pleasure to see you again, sir. Thank you, thank you for being here.
Okay, there's no, are there any other members of the audience who wish to be heard for or against the application? Having heard none, sir, is there anything else you wish to say?
No, it's been, it's been a pleasure.
All right, Mr. Butler. Is there anyone on the board who wishes to make a, a motion for or against the application?
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion to approve this variance, and I want to applaud the applicant for the explanation for all these years that you remembered that the fence was there and replacing it. Whether the benefit can be achieved by other means feasible to the applicant, I think all he's doing here is just replacing the old existing fence and enhancing it to a better fence. Is it gonna cause any desirable change on Route 7? I don't think it's gonna cause any people flying there. There's no, I think it will even look good to, to have it in the neighborhood the way he designed it. Is the request substantial? Usually, as we all know, we don't approve six feet fences between the front and the back of the house, but in this case, it's been there, it seems to be hidden with all the trees and so on, so that shouldn't be a problem. Whether the request will have adverse physical or environment, I don't see any problem with this at all. Whether the alleged difficulty is self-created, I don't see a self-created because it was there before he even bought the house, before he purchased it. So for all these reasons, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion to approve it.
Thank you, Mr. Latif. A motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
A motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion on that motion? Having heard no discussion, Ms. Shiketti, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Mr. Dolman?
Yes.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes, and I applaud again the applicant for thoroughness in describing this and for maintaining the fence for so long and, and wanting to improve the look of it with a new fence.
Thank you.
Mr. Daly?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes, and I find it significant that the neighbor has come out and spoken in favor of the application. I vote yes.
Mr. Antonikowski?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Chairperson Hoke?
Yes, I, I'd just like to indicate that I typically take a strict view on six foot fences, and my main concern is treating all applicants equally, and I think there's sometimes a slippery slope in approving some applications, not approving other applications. One of the exceptions in my mind has always been to allow an applicant who has an existing six foot fence in disrepair to improve their property by replacing it. Doesn't seem to make any sense to allow that property or that fence to incentivize the applicant to just keep the status quo, and that, it doesn't look very good. So I think that has a negative detriment to the neighborhood, which obviously is the, your goal in replacing this fence. And I also appreciate the fact that you've taken further steps to mitigate the need for the variance by moving that one panel back behind the, the front corner of the property. So all of those factors weighed heavily in my mind. Additionally, I would note, not for the applicant, but I was impressed with the estimate that was put up there, because the estimate had stamped on it, the responsibility for getting a building permit lies with the homeowner.
Oh, yeah.
Which is something that frequently comes before this board as, whose responsibility was it? And so I think that you should feel comfortable with the contractor that you have chosen.
I'll tell you this, too, it was their idea to move the transition piece.
Sounds like, it sounds like, it sounds like you have a good contractor there. We're, so you're, your application's been approved seven to zero. Thank you, have a good night.
Have a good evening.
Is there any other matters before the board? Would like, somebody like to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.